I'd like to call the meeting to order. And do a little explaining, at the last meeting, I had incorporated a moment of silence prior to the pledge. And I'm accustomed to that because we do it at every meeting at the township level. But some people wanted me to explain the etiquette for it. You can stand, you can sit. If you stand, you'll be prepared for the pledge, which will immediately come after the moment of silence. So with that, let's have a moment of silence for personal reflection, followed by the
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Jeremy.
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
Dorsh?
Here.
Mrs. Nix?
Here.
And just for the record, Mrs. Graziosi and Mr. Fuji are not able to be with us tonight.
That takes us to number five, district goals: improve academic achievement, promote whole child development, optimize capital and human resources, and demonstrate financial That'll take us to six, and six-one is, recommended the board approve the minutes of January 13, 2022 organizational meeting, and the January 13 and January 20, 22, 2022 regular scheduled meetings. Do I have a motion?
Some of...
A second.
I didn't review them the second time, but one of the Mr. Crowes's left the L off.
Okay. We can go back...
You might review before you make a prayer.
We can, we can go back through and make sure we got all the Ls.
Okay. Go ahead with the roll call.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
And Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And that takes us to number seven, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We'll start with academic achievement tonight, and proud to introduce our Big Walnut Elementary Principal, Mrs. Lauren Hightkamp. She's in her first year and doing an outstanding job at BEWE this year, so thanks for coming tonight, and I'll let you introduce whoever you're from.
It's just me tonight, but I have some, some video where I've been able to include some voice from our teachers and our students, so as part of the presentation. So I wanted to start by just thanking you, the Board of Education, Mrs. Hamburg for inviting me here tonight to talk about what we're doing at BEWE. And I'm really going to use this as an opportunity to talk about not just what we're doing in our building, but also what we're doing really sort of a combined effort between all four of our elementaries, a new program that we're bringing that is really focused on coming together as a community around, around our students. So we're going to talk to you a little bit about our program we're starting this year called the Big Family Read Aloud. So as you know, as Mrs. Hamburg mentioned, I am new to the district, new to Big Walnut, and one of my first, one of my first introductions to our staff was when I met this summer with our PAC, which is our principal advisory committee, is a group of staff and teacher leaders in the building, and we sat around talking about what was going to be our theme for the year. And our theme for this year that we came up with pretty quickly was Better Together. And really where that's coming from is thinking about, I guess, we in the world, but especially to in education have been through a lot over the last couple of years, coming from March of 2020, when we were forced totally apart and working in isolation, teaching from home, and students learning at home. Big Walnut had a major achievement, being able to come back in person all year last year, but we know that a lot of our families were still learning, a lot of our students were still learning in the virtual learning program, were seeking other opportunities like homeschooling or private schools. Some of our teachers were teaching from home in VLP, and so coming back this year really felt like coming back together. Our students were returning from VLP, many of our families who have, who were using those alternative options came back in, and one of my first introductions to BEWE was our back-to-school night, our open house. And right away, the feeling of home and community is just incredible. Seeing our parents come in our building, and even though they were wearing masks, you could just see the smiles on their faces. So happy to be back in our buildings, meeting their kids' teachers, going into the classrooms, and our kids too. So that's where we settled on our theme.
Yep.
And I have some teachers and students here who are going to tell you a little bit about what it means to them.
Our theme this year at BEWE is Better Together, and I would say that was turned out a little early. But also, it's my house. I love coming to work because I have a team of colleagues, but also I have incredible kids that we know that together, we make a diagnostic team.
Better Together means that we all come together to support one another, have fun with one another, and just all around be a better group and be best friends with each other.
Better Together means you can help each other. Better Together means that it's not just depending on you to get the job done, everybody should share your responsibilities.
Better Together means sharing cookies.
Did you miss that kindergarten at the end? She said, oh, sorry. Better Together means sharing cookies. Who doesn't disagree with that? So the idea of Better Together...
We really started to think about, so our staff, first off, talking about our staff, I was blessed to come into BEWE where our staff truly collaborates. From weekly PLCs, they are exchanging lesson plans, talking about something that didn't work, and trying to refine it and tweak it for our students. Our data meetings, they really lean in to analyzing student data, to looking so closely to thinking about what do our students need, whether it be enrichment or intervention, and where, how can we meet them where they are and help them grow? And our professional learning days, which have been an incredible opportunity, and all of our teachers, I would say across the district, truly show up as learners those days. They are open, they have an open mind to what new ideas they can bring back, and the little shifts they can make to find a new opportunity for their students. And then our students, as they, we welcome them back, we really reinforce this idea of how can we be better together? What does it mean to be better together at BEWE? And our teachers have taken that and run with it. Our students are doing a lot of hands-on, hands-on learning, where we're getting them to collaborate and think together and problem solve, see that, like you heard in that student example, the ideas of others help make our product better, help grow our ideas. So really kind of encouraging that open mindset and, and that hands-on collaboration and listening. And then our parents, and I think when we think about our parents, we know that we need to partner. And this is really, if you want to click the next one, is really a triangle. We know that it takes all three sides to really support our students here in the district, that it's parents at home and teachers at school, and then the students being that, that active part of what we're trying to build here. The tough thing is that parents aren't there every day, so they're like this missing piece. We're, we're educating the students, and we're growing in our relationships with them, and the parents are at home. And if you've ever put a kindergarten, you're a kindergartner on the bus for the first time, you know how that feels as a parent. For the first time in their lives, you're sending them off and you don't know what they do all day, you know? And usually they come home and say, nothing. How should they? Good. They tell you about, yeah, snack or recess. And so, so they put a lot of trust in us, and our families really do trust us and believe in us. But how can we bring them in even more? I think we do a really great job with parent-teacher conferences and newsletters and communication, but we know that it's been tough the last couple of years with there just being less family events, less, less of that going on, and we're getting back there. We're definitely moving in the right direction, but we really wanted to do something that was different, something to really bring our parents in, and that's where the idea of the Big Family Read Aloud came. And so we started out thinking about our school, and then we really said, this needs to be district-wide. So I'm presenting to you about BEWE, but it's really going to be all four buildings. And what the Big Family Read Aloud is, is if you've ever heard of a community or a library doing kind of a, a citywide or a townwide read, where they pick one book and everybody in the town is encouraged to read that book, and you might have events or a, or a discussion group, that's kind of what we're building off of here, what we're going for. But here, it's a read aloud. And so the entire district, for our K through four students, every single family is going to receive a copy of the same book, and our PTOs are graciously supporting this program, so we thank them by buying the books for all of our families. So each student, next Friday, will come home with a copy of the book. And I think the title might have leaked, but I'm not going to be the one who leaks it, so I am going to keep it a secret today. And our kids are going to come home with the book, and in this book is going to be a calendar. For the month of March, all of our families are going to read together at home. We will have activities in school that accompany the reading, we're going to have little celebrations and celebrate reading and do some learning around that book, but the big important piece is the reading is happening at home. Families gathered around a book, reading aloud to their students, really to enforce that importance of family literacy, but also to build again, that connection between school and home, that we know, our students see that. They're watching us, and they see that, wow, my, my parents or my guardians, my families, they work together with our teacher, teachers, and they really both care about me and what I learned and how I grow. So you can kind of see a little bit about what's coming, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the why. Research is pretty strong on family literacy programs, they do matter. You can kind of see some of the things up there, but in addition to that oral language and vocabulary and reading skills, they really go beyond that. They touch, we see improvements in students' overall achievement and just their attitudes towards school. Family trust in schools increases, students' beliefs that they can succeed improves. And just making the home a literacy-rich environment makes a huge difference, because kids see that I can read for joy, I can read, I can share the act of reading, and I can talk with people about what I'm reading, and seeing the value that it has as you grow older. So when kids see their parents reading, they realize that this isn't just something I do at the set aside reading time at school, this is a lifelong activity. So really, looking at this program, kind of bringing us all together. Nope, you can play.
It's important to partner with parents at home because they help continue their child's education even when teachers aren't around. This event is going to be a lot of fun, and I'm really excited to see parents continue their, educating their students at home and having those quality conversations around literature and just engaging with their students.
So this year, we have a privilege of partnering with parents in a Big Family Read Aloud. And one of the things that's super important in building a strong bridge and connection with our families is to include the parents, not only on weekly reaching out through Schoology and letters, but also on a more personal level with their kids. And when kids know that they're supported both at school and at home, and that parents and teachers are a team, and we're their advocates, it builds a stronger community. And so like I said, one of those things for BEWE is, and for all of the elementaries is to do the Big Family Read Aloud, to have fun together, to come together, and to learn and love for reading.
Parents and teachers should work together so the parents can know what is going on in school, so they can help their kid at home if they need it. I think parents and teachers should work together because parents and teachers both help you learn new things, and they can help you, both help you be the best person you can.
And I always say that, you know, our, our students, you think about their most important person in their life is probably their parent, and, and to see that their teacher is partnering with their parents just speaks volumes to them. Last thing I wanted to touch on was the Eagle Profile, and we've really embraced this work at BEWE as a staff, and thinking about, starting to dive in, thinking about what does this look like in our classroom? How do we develop these skills for our students that we know are so important? And the more we've dug into it, the more we realize, this isn't just something for our students. These dispositions, being a collaborator, a communicator, a problem solver, all of these are really something that we as the adults need to model for our students. And that goes to everyone, from the bus driver who greets them in the morning, the food service, person who gives them their lunch, our custodians, our teachers, showing our students that as adults, how do we solve problems? How do we work together? How do we communicate with each other? And so the two that I really want to highlight with this program are obviously collaborator, and showing our kids that we are partnering together with their parents and we're working together. And then the last one is really responsible citizen. So our hope for this program really goes beyond just families and teachers, but also we're looking to you as the community. So I guess I'm coming to the Board of Education also to invite you to be a part of it. We would like to invite you to read the book with us, we would like to invite you to be a guest reader if you'd like, and record yourself reading, and if that's something that you're interested, please reach out to Kate or Annie, and we can kind of set you up to schedule a recording of a read aloud of a chapter, and we'll release that to parents. We want our kids and our families to see that this whole community really stands behind our students, that they, we believe that they are our most valuable asset that we have, and that we're showing up for them. So that's kind of, and I have a book for you, and it's wrapped, so you can't see what it is.
But don't open it here, right? Because we don't want the kids to see the title, right?
I don't open it. So, and do you have any questions about the program, or about what we're doing at BEWE? And I don't know if they're typically our questions.
Did you see, were other schools doing this in different areas?
Yeah, so all four elementaries are participating, and I know that Annie's planning a similar accompanying program for our ELC students. So it won't be the chapter book, but some read aloud activities for them throughout the month as well.
And had you seen this in other communities as well, or?
So I actually was a reading specialist in one of my previous districts and did this program there. So we loved it, it was a community very similar to Big Walnut where I came from, and, and it was just a great way to bring our community together. So pitched it here and was very encouraged to, to go for it. Again, I thought it would just be one building, but it's been amazing that every single building has said, no, I want in, so. Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful idea. And I'm thrilled to see you're using a paper book rather than something on the chrome.
Well, we wanted to provide as much access as possible, and in addition to the 1,344 copies that we bought, we also bought 20 copies of a Spanish edition. And so our families who, who Spanish was their primary at-home language, if they chose to, we, we bought them the Spanish edition, so I think that was great too.
Yeah, any other questions? And then you have, do you have anything additional with Read Across America, or was that kind of the...
So we're, yeah, I know, it is kind of, I know, it's a separate item, so sorry, I guess I kind of was misleading on that, but our culminating week will really be kind of our Read Across America week, where we celebrate reading just in general with our students.
Part of that, I know in the past, some board members have done the reading, and so nice way to tie it in with the book study, and again, would encourage you to reach out and do that. It's one of my favorite things to do. I got to read to some first graders this week, and of course, they were just excited to hear that I call snow days, but I think that'll be next book. So if you get a chance to do that, I hope you can.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Lauren.
All right. Thanks.
As she is passing out the super secret special books there, we'll have Mrs. Clark and Ms. Toma come up with their academic update.
Well, I'm just going to go first, since I'm standing right there.
Good evening. I'm here just to give you a quick little update on our instructional technology software and where we are at. I know that Kate and I have mentioned several times this year about our ILC, and that stands for, for those of you who don't know, Instructional Leadership Committee. And part of that committee, we have a subcommittee which we are working closely with to look at what technology programs we're using, and do we need to revise that, revamp it? We are on, we were on a three-year rotation, and then COVID hit, so I think it's year four that we've had these same programs. So basically, what we have done is we, we created with that committee a rubric to see if each program matches what we feel is best for students. So part of those criteria points, personalizing, is it personalizing instruction for our students? Is it engaging? Are we able to see student growth? Are we able to grab data reports from that? And then also, is it, is it, it's not replacing the teacher, but it's a supplemental to what the teacher's doing. And then also, in addition to that, does that program offer some sort of professional development for our teachers so that they can be experts at the program?
Annie, could you, sorry to interrupt you, but in case some folks aren't familiar, could you maybe share how the technologies used, especially like, maybe give an example of an elementary reading block?
Sure.
And kind of what role that plays versus the rest of the...
Absolutely. Yes, so we, I'm going to backtrack a little bit. With our committee, we also created a philosophy, because we don't want a Chromebook just to sit in front of a child for an entire 90-minute reading, or 75-minute reading block, because we don't feel like that, that is what's best for kids. So how we use that is we do a workshop model, and I don't know if we, if you've seen our framework, but we do small group guided readings. So while the teacher's working with students, the other, small group of students, the other students are doing stations. So one of those stations might be six to eight kids on a Chromebook, and then they're doing, for example, I know in first grade, they're doing Lexia, which is a instructional software program that is a personalized learning path. So it gives them a diagnostic assessment to see where they are, and where their strengths and weaknesses are, and then it takes them on their learning path. And that isn't used more than, I would say, 15 minutes, really probably less than that in the K-2 area, because by the time the student logs on and transitions from a station, it's probably less than that. So really, it's in one to two max rotations during that one reading block. So again, we definitely agree with Ms. Nix when you said thankful for the paperback and not a screen, because we also agree that it is important to put books in kids' hands. So we do a really great job of balancing that.
Most of the books, the kids use in our books, like we think of books.
Where you turn the page.
Correct. You do have, there are some titles that are on the Chromebook that might be that one or two technology stations. Could you describe what some of those other self-guided stations might be in addition to the technology?
Sure, absolutely.
Just to give people a full picture.
Yeah, and I have to go back to BEWE, so I'm sorry, I'm going to use BEWE as an example because I was principal there, but some of those stations might be word work, where the students are manipulating letters to create different words, depending on word patterns that they're working on. Another independent station might be reading a book, reading to self. It might be some sort of collaboration with another student in the class, it might be a book talk, it might be writing about what they just read. It could possibly be, thank you, a phonics game. So all of the other stations are not technology-based. And then obviously, you have that group of students that's working with that teacher in guided reading, so, or guided math, whatever that might be. In the math workshop model, some of the stations would look like math games, working with a partner on flashcards, and then the same type of concept where you would have a personalized learning path for the math. We have a lot of students, in one classroom, for example, a first-grade classroom, we can have students that are on a first-grade math level all the way up to a sixth-grade math level. So some of these programs give us that opportunity to reach all of our students for that small amount, 12-ish, 15-ish minutes. And then the reports that they, that the programs give us allow our teachers to dive even deeper into the data, to figure out where the holes are and how we can close those gaps. So, did I answer it?
Any questions?
Good, you guys have questions about that? Okay, so just to kind of finish, so we took that rubric, and we, as a committee, looked at some different programs, and they use that to kind of go through each program. This program does not meet this criteria, or this program doesn't meet this criteria. So then we were able to narrow down our selection, so we have a couple vendors that we're working with, where we're going to push out some pilots and some trials for about a month, month and a half, so that our, our teachers can, and students can get the feel for it. And then we'll come back together as a committee and get, obviously, their, their feedback on which direction we may or may not go. So just wanted to give you that update, and we'll continue to update you on that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You know, Annie and I have experienced lots of firsts this year with our role being new to us, so we had a new first this week I wanted to share with you guys. We were part of launching our podcast and preparing for that. So we began completing the podcast this week using, or with support from students at the high school. Angie's done a great job of just really thinking creatively about how we can communicate in different ways, reach different audiences. So we're really excited about it. We've always done a state of the schools, and so we try to kind of mix up how we do state of the schools and have tried different formats. So we're excited that this year we'll be doing state of the schools through our podcast. So Annie and I had our first ever recording of a podcast experience. We were maybe a little bit stressed, I'm not going to lie.
We had to do a few takes over.
We had to do a few takes over to make sure that we, you know, sounded the way we wanted to. But we shared information about our academic vision, the key initiatives going on in the district, the role of our stakeholder groups, which include the Instructional Leadership Committee that Annie was just talking about, as well as our Academic Advisory Council. And there's a lot more packed in this episode too. So we're really excited, it should be coming out in March, and we hope that it will answer our community's questions about what does that curriculum piece look like, and how does Big Walnut tackle curriculum, because it's such a broad term, so. We're excited.
Questions for Kate?
No, thanks for doing that. I, I love, like you said, how Angie's always creative about, you know, different ways to communicate. I think it's really helpful. I know that the Facebook Lives were always good for people to, to see and hear. And I love that you're providing like specific examples of what the curriculum looks like, because I think, you know, sometimes we can read things, but until you can really kind of picture that and get a better idea, it's hard to, it's hard to know, so that's really helpful, so thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to release two episodes a week in March, which will be on each of the areas in the district, and we have Jay Money making a repeat appearance. If you ever listened to him on the calls that we had a few years ago, we were able to, we actually got really good feedback on those, if anyone ever listened to those, we could pilot a few, but the price was really expensive, so this is kind of getting a similar effect, but a lot cheaper. Get to use the kids' new podcast video recording studio at the high school, which is cool, and have them involved. And then, so that'll be in March, and then season two will go down to one episode a week, and the kids are working right now on, they're doing the intro and the outro, they're also doing some commercials. And then they're going to start helping more in the second season with some of the hosting, and they're being trained on how to do the technical end of it, which I could begin to explain. Caleb on our tech department's helping with that. And then second season is going to be just more exploring topics and questions that people have, so certainly open to suggestions, if there's something you would like covered. We've got the kids brainstorming ideas as well. You can email us at podcast@bwls.net, and we'll be happy to consider whatever topics we're able to address, so. Thank you for being our first skinny pick on that.
And that takes us to 7.2. Do you have anything for that?
I do not, just...
And then 7.3?
So Mr. Schwartz is making his way up to the podium with the construction update.
I have no free books or anything to hand out, so I just want to start there. Just a couple good pieces of good news. So the board has a one-page document, changed last month, you might recall the format, a little more bulletized, a little more specific, beyond the high school and project, if you will, and talking about a couple other things. And I've even changed it a little bit today, maybe to highlight how some of these areas as they come online are specific to use requirements, or maybe events that are happening in the building. So to start out, I'm happy to, to report that the last area of the new high school, the area we could not occupy, the theater wing, we received occupancy last week, so there was training with the staff. I know, I think it was yesterday, I'm looking at Principal Jados, I think they had an eighth grade orientation in the theater. There's rehearsals happening every night after school now, you see, so there's lots of activity. We're, like I would say, we're driving the car and kicking the tires and learning how to use the new toys, so we're moving forward with that, so that's good news. Kind of going from there, though, there's still a lot of work to do on the exterior, sports and whatnot. So going to item two, while not chronological, I want to point out the football concession building is on track for March 9th. That ties into the first lacrosse scrimmage. While that's not a paid event, and obviously we'll have visitors and stuff and fans in the stands, so we want to be able to use that facility. Pointing out a couple things, I just want to share, if you were to go over there now, we can walk around three sides of the concession stand, we can get to the restrooms, we can get to this concession area, there's two different sides for the restrooms. We cannot walk up to the ticket booth. So that is concrete and asphalt that has not been installed, it is weather sensitive, we're looking, working on a Plan B, just to share, if we have to operate a ticket booth a little later in the month, I'll get to that bullet in a second. But if we were to go over there now, that's probably the most evident thing that's not completed, and again, it's weather sensitive, we're trying to develop a Plan B for the ticket booth. Scoreboards, lights, in fact, they're now already using the lights for night practice, just to share on the lacrosse field, or the multi-court field. Kind of going from there, again, it actually starts, I'm sorry, on the 22nd, they're going to start practice for lacrosse, so they're, they're going to start using lights and whatnot, so start benefiting from that field, which was installed last fall, just to remind you. In terms of other milestone dates, the first lacrosse game or first use of that stadium is scheduled for March 19th. So that is, even though we will beat that date by about 10 days, that's when the stadium... So that is, even though we will beat that date by about 10 days, that's when the stadium, press box, seating, and all that will go live, but March 9th, as it says there, is when we're hoping to have that handed over to us. Kind of the end of the sports, and last time I kind of flubbed or messed up the way I presented it, just to share, so the multi-sports field, the grass fields, if you will, they're slated to be planted in 5522, but again, we won't be able to use them for almost a full year or growing season. So that's where that March 1st, 2023 date comes in, that we could, because they get such heavy use. If it was just our front lawn, we could use them much sooner. But being athletic field, they really need to have grow in and really get a thick root structure to be used. So I'll stop there. That is the high school or high school athletics. Any questions on those items? Okay. Couple other things I'll point out, again, we're under contract, as you know, for the interior renovation of the high school, former high school, sorry, or 555, as some people called it, or now the future middle school. So that's underway next week officially. We've done some preliminary work, but really there'll be boots on the ground next week during the demo and removal of furniture.
Doug, could I ask you a question for just a moment? Heard some comments and questions lately as to, just wanting some more clarity around why we didn't wait to move into the new high school until August. Could you kind of give that perspective from your lens, especially in regards to getting the 555 building ready for August?
Sure. So the desired scope, just to recall, is predominantly replacing the carpet, many of it original to 1991, removing a couple locker areas to create some extended learning areas, as you've seen them in the new high school and elementary, and also doing a little bit of renovations in the bathrooms. That work alone takes, right now, we're right at the edge of the schedule, if you will, to do it. So even though we're starting, awarded it in December, starting in January and February, we're going to be racing just to get product and have it done by July of this year in time for the administrators to move in and staff and start school in August. So we needed that entire break just to be able to do it. It was not something, obviously carpet, you can't remove it when people are still in the building, so just timing-wise, we had to have that gap in time.
So aside from we didn't want that nice new building to sit empty for half a year, I just want to make sure people were clear that that was a big reason. I know that's been brought up a lot lately, why didn't we wait? Would have been very, very challenging to make that transition, and we felt pretty strongly that that 1991 carpeting needed replaced.
Yeah, just a summertime would not have been adequate. If we'd waited till the end of May to complete students in the former high school and then move them into the new high school at summer would not have been an adequate timeframe to renovate the school, so we still would have had some type of interesting gap in time to delay the middle school basically moving over.
Thank you.
The other item here, I've done it in blue, just to kind of point out too, just reminder, the new high school track will not be in in time to use this spring. We've known that for months and months and months and months, probably almost a year now. So the plan has been all along to use the old or 555 or future middle school track. You go over there now, you may notice, remember, National, NCAA is doing a renovation or conversion of that grass field into an artificial turf. That work's occurring. It is also weather-sensitive, but they are working on a plan such that we can use the track. I think it's about three weeks here coming up that we have to start using the track. So the field will not be done. The field will not be completed in terms of a new artificial field at the former high school, but the track will be usable and the field adjacent area will be safe, that it's not an issue for students to be using that as an event space, just to share. Other than that, moving, planning meetings are coming, going on for the moves. And again, the actual moves again are July of this year. We actually moved the middle school and the intermediate to their new homes. So that's kind of the big, broad-picture update. Any questions on those, or?
Thank you. All your work on that, Doug. Appreciate it. President, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Takes us to number eight, which is recognitions. And we've got Abigail Abraham.
Abigail? Want to meet me in the middle here? A few things here to read about Abigail Abraham. It says here you have two siblings. They look like they're pretty proud of you. I wanted to talk a little bit about, well, actually, you can, you can maybe tell us some of these things if you don't mind. It talks here about some of your favorite hobbies. Do you want to tell us about some of your favorite hobbies?
Yes, I like drawing, dancing.
What kind of?
I started doing that last September, and I feel maybe.
Do you like to read, too?
Yes.
Are you reading anything special, Rebecca?
Um, music.
Yeah? And you like it? Do you? What's your favorite class in school?
Uh, I'll say that.
Math? Nice. Let's see here. Oh, I know, I wanted to read this one thing. It says, one of the questions on here was, what do you want to be when you grow up? Says, I want to be a doctor. My mom is a nurse, and I learn a lot about her job from her. When she comes home from work, I ask her lots of questions. I will get to meet lots of new people and hopefully feel better. I thought that was pretty special. I'm going to read just a few things that some of your teachers had to say about you, and then we'll let you take this paper home so that you and your family can read the rest of them. Abigail's current teacher, Mrs. Kennel, said, "Abigail always has a positive attitude. Her constant smile is contagious. Her classmates chose her as the best example of what it means to be trying. They wrote messages explaining how she is friendly and helps others." And then Abigail's music teacher, Mrs. Blocker, said, "Abigail has been a positive presence since her first day at BeWe. She has always come to school with a smile on her face and a greeting on her lips. She enjoys trying new things and is a wonderful role model for both her attitude and her behavior. Abigail is patient with her classmates and the younger students in the school, which she demonstrates as safety patrol. Abigail is a joy to have at BeWe." So on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to congratulate you for being Student of the Month. I'm going to take this home with you. Go next door with your family. It can take a picture for the next Eagle exam.
Mrs. Clark will meet you over there.
And next, we have Savannah Smith, Big Wana High School Student of the Month. Long walk.
I read this, and I went, how do you have time to come to work? Savannah is the daughter of John and Tanya Smith. Raise your hands. And for the past two years, she's been a member of Student Council and currently serves as the president of both the Spanish Club and the...
Abuela Amigas.
Thank you. And tell them about that. Tell everybody what that is.
Yeah, so that was a club started last year by a former student, and we're a club where we go to classes with our Spanish-speaking students at the high school to help tutor and translate during those classes.
So along with that, she is a member of the Best Buddies Program. And tell them what the Best Buddies Program is.
Basically, Best Buddies is just a club where we make friends. So it involves all students, especially those with developmental disabilities at the high school, and it's just a great way for all of our students to grant out.
And the next one is a favorite of mine, because I was the first woman to join the Sunbury Lions Club, and she is a Leo. So that kind of makes us related. She's also the principal's leadership team, and she also has been an Eagles First Flight mentor. Would you like to tell them what the Eagles First Flight is?
Sure, there's a day right before the first day of school where all of the incoming freshmen come in a day early, and us upperclassmen, who are the mentors, we kind of show them around the building, answer all their questions, and just get them out of the business.
She is a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, and is a National Merit Cindy Kleinworth. But do you have an update on that?
I do. I learned today that I am now a National Merit finalist.
Oh, let's see. See why I wonder how she has time for the morning? She's also a candidate to apply for the Presidential Scholars Program sponsored by the Department of Education, so good luck to her.
Thank you.
And would you like to tell them what your GPA is?
I believe it is a 4.395.
I didn't know you could get one. Preparing to, for her last lacrosse season on the new high school field.
Yes, we're very excited.
Yeah, there you are. And after graduation, she plans to study political science at...
The University of Dayton.
Welcome, Claire. Where I've been a graduate. With a degree in public administration, her goal is to work in the nonprofit management field. So, you know, what habit you've done. Maybe play football. Her teachers have said the following, Savannah is a wonderful young lady, as well as an amazing student. She works hard in school and can be counted on to help others and her community. Another teacher said she is the president of the Spanish Club this year, and she plans and coordinates all of our club activities. She also has been great during each Eagle time to tutor and assist my Spanish two students. And another teacher said Savannah is an exceptional leader and embodies all of our Eagle's strong attributes. She is involved in many activities and leadership positions within our school. She is a great role model for all our younger students, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You have to actually come back after you get your picture.
And next, we have Gabby Jaggar. And she's from the Big Wana Elementary, Art Student of the Month.
So Gabby, can you tell everyone what grade you're in?
First grade.
First grade? This is a beautiful picture. Can you tell us a little bit about it? Or do you want me to?
This is my friend from uni. She has to stay on my backpack, and she needs kindness to my other... She needs kindness to my little Hello Kitty teaching. So that little Hello Kitty teaching gets to come off when we go home.
And you did this with, what, what is this? Is this paint? Is it watercolor? Or what, what did you use to do that?
I used watercolors.
Watercolors? Very beautiful. Is it okay with you if we keep this here in this building to display until the end of the school year, and then you can take it home?
Sure.
Well, this certificate is for you as well, and we'll keep your artwork here, but if you want to take this over to the other room right now with your family and take a picture to family, Eagle family? You want to stand there and hold this?
Next is Alexa DiGenova.
Alexa was unable to be with us tonight, but this is her painting. And this is the message from her art teacher, Liz Shar. Alexa is such a phenomenal artist with an amazing work ethic and exemplary attitude. This painting, two pieces, was inspired by an assignment to paint any animal or detailed object of her choosing. The goal of the project was to depict with as much detail as possible, different angles of the same animal while showcasing compositional techniques, color mixing, blending and layering the acrylic paints. Alexa has a passion for animals, and her love of animals, goats in particular, shines through this piece. All who have seen it smile at their cuteness and beauty. So she will be getting a certificate of recognition, and I'm assuming she will agree to let, to let the paintings stay? Is that...
I think so. I have not, but I think Mrs. Lee talked to her teacher.
Okay, great. So there it is.
And that brings us to item nine, Treasures Report. Got something for us, Jeremy?
I sure do. So I'll just go hit some of the highlights on January's financial report, again focusing more on the revenue side, just to share some of the quirks that happened. We are, because on the expenditure side, we're running about 1% under, but really pretty much on track. For our property taxes, if you were able to review the report, you'll see that we were quite a bit over. This is kind of a timing thing, where we were able to get three advance payments from the county compared to two last year, so I anticipate that that will drop down and be more in line for February. And then usually it's around March that we get our final settlement, and we'll see where we have come and how we are with our projections as a whole. Income tax, you'll also see, I think I've shared, and we've, this has been a hot topic over the last several years, just with different timelines and filing requirements and all of that, but I'm happy to see how, after the blip of last year, we really are continuing to seem like we're on track with that normal trend with our third quarterly payment. And you see that with January, where we received our third quarterly payment. The other kind of odd thing that I've been talking about for several months is in the state grants, which is essentially our foundation formula. You'll notice that we are quite a bit over, as I, I think I've shared this as well. Based on projections, I was not sure if there would be a lump sum payment or if it would be spread over. We did get the lump sum payment. The way that our totals are looking, I'm anticipating being under in the unrestricted as that continues to tick down month over month, offset by our restricted amount being over. And really, it's all part of the same formula, but under the new formula, where we had about two restricted areas, we now have, I think, five or six. And that just means that we should be, we have to track and report how we're spending it for those specific purposes, is the essential of that. So you'll see that begin to kind of come down and balance out to, I believe, all in all about where we expected it to be. So that's all I had to share tonight. Any questions on that? Also, I wanted to share about two house bills that I've been kind of tracking and share my understanding of what they are, as well as just my concern of what it means for us. The first one I was going to share about is both, I guess I'll frame it, both of them, at least in my opinion, are taking away some of our right as a district to be able to be part of a conversation, which I'm always an advocate with our community partners, townships, villages. I want to be part of those conversations. So that's overall part of the concern, on this first one especially. It is, like I said, House Bill 123, and it is the community reinvestment areas. While we do not have any current community reinvestment areas that we've had those agreements in place, I know that we have had some presented to us, and there have been some, there's a potential one that would come before the board. What this does is it repeals the annual reporting requirement once those are in place. And right now, we have what's called the Turk Meeting, where a lot of those are done, and I participate in that, where there is a presentation, a presenting of, is the individual hitting the appropriate marks of employment and different things that were set out in that agreement? So that's a concern, that that is no longer a requirement to be able to continue to share that individual is living up to their end of the bargain. It also increases the threshold requiring board approval. It also increases the threshold requiring board approval from the 50% to a 75%. Those who may not know, uh, in the community, you can go up to a 100% exemption on a, a CRA or a community reinvestment area. And when you, you know, under current law, when you, um, go over 50%, it's required that a board approves that. So it's, it's upping that amount. And again, more can be, more taxes can be given away or exempted underneath what is being proposed, uh, without us having a seat to have a conversation at least. The third point on that is, um, as also part of our current law, if there is supposed, if there is anticipated payroll taxes coming in over a million dollars, um, from new jobs coming in because of the CRA, uh, we have the opportunity to negotiate with, um, the city or, or a village if they have an income tax and, uh, be able to share in some of that income tax coming in. And that's being raised from a million to 3 million. Um, so those are kind of the pieces that, uh, that I'm seeing in this. And it's just, right now, um, it is, it had, I believe it was this week, had its third hearing in the Senate Ways and Means Committee. So something to continue to watch and if you, um, know legislators, reach out to them. If it would be the, the board's desire, um, I would happily, um, there are kind of some template letters that we could, um, write our legislators in opposition of something like this, just because, again, I think it should be a local decision on those types of things, um, and at least be able to have a conversation in that. So that, that was, uh, House Bill 123. And then also wanted to mention House Bill 126, uh, which is regarding property values and property value complaints. To be clear, uh, we do do some of these, um, and that we do not focus on residential though. Uh, what we, what we do is we have a, uh, an assessment that we, we have our attorney that we, we approved at the beginning of the year for Board of Revisions. And, um, we're only looking at, we're not trying to, um, undermine or do anything against what the county is already doing through their triennial updates and appraisals. Uh, but there are those sales that happen in between those time periods where, and, and it, sometimes it can be just a transfer, same owner of sorts, but a transfer between an LLC and, and another organization or something like that. Um, and, and at times I have seen that, uh, that can artificially, um, show a lower value on the auditor's website than, than what a fair market sale would show. So what this, so there are a handful that we do each year that, uh, that we do participate in this. And, um, some of the key points on House Bill 126, to my understanding, is that it would prohibit us as a school district, from, um, filing any initial complaints. Further than it, um, would, it would require us if there was a, a complaint that if we were to file a counter complaint, then each one of those that we would be, um, filing a counter complaint against would be a resolution that would come before the board. While, like I said, we only have a handful, um, this could be much more, um, of a burden for larger school districts, uh, that may have more. And as we grow, I mean, that could be something, if we begin to have a, a larger commercial tax base, that could also be a concern. It, it also prohibits any, um, kind of negotiations between the two parties to come to a, a resolution outside of the, uh, Board of Revisions through direct payments and settlements and things like that. It removes that opportunity. Um, and then also, once a decision is made by the Board of Revisions, current, uh, currently, that can be, uh, appealed, uh, but that, this current law as it's, as it is being discussed, uh, would remove that opportunity as well. So, uh, wanted to bring this to your attention and, and ultimately my concern is, just like I said before, it removes, uh, we are, as everybody knows, school districts are heavily funded by property taxes. Um, and it is, I would not be doing my job, in my opinion, if I wasn't trying to, uh, look out and make sure that everybody is being taxed fairly. And, um, generally a arms-length sale is the way that, that is, is being, um, seen. So, um, just wanted to bring each of these to your attention. And, uh, as you, as I mentioned, if you would like me to, um, have a letter in opposition of this, would happily prepare that and, and send it off, so.
Jeremy, I have a question.
Yes.
Are these out of committee yet, down at the State House?
So the, right now, the Senate for House Bill 126, they did pass it in December. Uh, it is sitting in, um, it is sitting to be looked at by the House to, um, let's see, uh, concur on a vote. Uh, but it has not, as of February 10th, it had not been taken up yet by the House. Uh, the other one then, um, it was just this week that it was, uh, in the Senate Ways and Means Committee for the third hearing.
Which would mean that it's already come out of the House, went to them. They'll go through the bill, then send it back.
Right.
For those that might not understand the process. And for the common people in the audience and online, this is, what this deals with is the Board of Revision is where there's a transfer and the district has a question as to whether the valuation on that property is proper or not. As Jeremy's explaining, these two bills will limit what we have as an ability to, in the future, attempt to get a correct valuation or a better valuation. It is an attempt to keep your taxes lower.
So that is, uh, lots, lots of stuff there, but that's, that's what I had to share.
Well, I tried to put it in.
I, no, I appreciate that.
I'm a simple man.
Hey, you know what? Sometimes I, maybe it's a little more.
I saw a couple glossy eyes out there.
Less is more.
Right. Any further questions for Jeremy?
No.
Is that all you had, Jeremy?
That's all I had.
Alrighty. Moving to item 10, selective board policies. Uh, we've, I've got a list of the board policies. It's subs, eh, I think it's substantial enough that rather than eating up time in our regular board meetings, that we have a work session sometime in the beginning of March. And I'm not going to say when because I need to get ahold of all the participants to see what fits in the schedule. But that would be before our next meeting, so I worked that out. I'll get ahold of you and we can set it up for publication. Did anybody have any questions on 10? I think I've got everybody's list. So, moving on to item number 11, Board Members' Items of Interest. We'll start on the left.
Well, I, I really like your program you're reading and excited to read the book as well as participate. I think it's a great idea and I'm glad that it's going to be going district-wide. I think more books with pages that children can learn to turn is very important. So thank you. That's it?
That's it. Sherry?
Um, with Read Across America Day coming up, I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank everyone, uh, on the team here in the district who plays a role in encouraging our students to read and developing young readers and putting time and effort into finding ways to get kids excited about reading. I grew up in a very small town in northeast Nebraska, pretty similar to Sunbury, actually. My town didn't have a lot going on, um, much less than Sunbury, actually. And coming from a, a pretty large family, I was the youngest of six kids. We didn't have a ton of resources, but I was blessed to live down the street from our county library. And I spent a huge chunk of my childhood at that library and I read my way through most of it. Being a skilled reader helped me be a better student. But the biggest benefit was the exposure to so many places, people, cultures and ideas that I never would have known about otherwise. And the exposure that I gained from reading gave me the confidence to do many unexpected things in my life. I want every child that comes through this district to love reading, and I know that's a hard task. But I think having a diverse library can support all students in finding titles that they can read and connect with at some level. Having a diverse collection also gives opportunities to students to read books that represent different abilities, cultures and beliefs, which can help them better understand and develop positive insights about those who are unlike them. A diverse book collection helps to stimulate thought and debate in a classroom to better develop critical thinking skills and to develop empathy. Our students have the greatest chance of meeting their maximum potential when they are able to couple the technical math, science and social studies and writing skills that they learn here each day with empathy and the SEL core skills that are strengthened by seeing themselves in the stories that they read and by reading stories that expand their worldview. This is a huge piece of the whole child framework. And I just want to thank all of the teachers, aides, intervention specialists and administrators here that work so hard to make this a priority in our district.
Mine's rather short. Moving on to, uh, item 12. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that you were really tired from all the stuff that you do. I was going to give you a reprieve, but go right ahead.
Okay, I'm doing all right over here. Good evening. Um, our students have been very busy this past month, so I'm just going to jump right into it. Um, our clubs especially have been up to a lot. German Club had a tasting day where they tried traditional German foods and a movie night on the learning stairs in the academic commons for their Valentine's Day event. Um, Spanish Club also had a Valentine's Day party where members made cards for nursing home patients and also friends in Spanish classes. So we, as Spanish Club officers, delivered these cards to the Inn at Walnut Trail and then Spanish teachers passed out cards during class respectively. All three of our language clubs are working together to plan a dodgeball tournament in the coming months, so stay tuned for more on that. Student Council upped their donation to 150 lunches for Hope House this month and plans to continue to provide with this organization for the rest of the year. They also had a sucker sale last week and all proceeds will go to Hope House either directly or through food supplies. The choir and band concerts in March will be hosted at Big Walnut, so those groups are eagerly preparing for their performances. As for sports, six boys swim team members made it to the district meet and several boys dive team members qualified for states. Our game day cheer team placed second at OCCs and qualified for states. Both girls and boys bowling were OCC champs for the first time ever. Sadly, girls basketball came to an end, but boys still have a few more games left in their season. A group is forming for boys volleyball, which is very exciting. The Ohio High School Athletic Association added boys volleyball as an emerging sport for next school year. As winter sports seasons come to a close, spring store, spring sports start with tryouts beginning next week. For academics, our third quarter is quickly coming to an end and our students have been hard at work. Our juniors will be taking the ACT test on March 1st, so for freshmen, sophomores and seniors, we do not have school that day. Senior quotes are also due March 1st. The National Honor Society induction information is becoming available for eligible juniors and seniors who are not already members, and there is a schoology group for more information on that. Eighth grade orientation was on Tuesday and we hope that incoming freshmen feel a bit more prepared for their exciting next year. And then lastly, Mr. Stimmel, one of our teachers at the high school, shared some great news with me recently. Some of our students participated in the biotechnology career development event at Central State University. To qualify for this level of competition, the team placed in the top 20 in the online test. Thank you to teacher Ashley Longshore for proctoring this test. In this event, each student identified equipment, completed safety scenarios and demonstrated lab skills while working together to solve a team problem. Thank you to teacher Heather Naumann for helping these students prepare their lab skills. And then our students placed third at the state level at this event. Team members included Maddie Jones, Jordan Loke, Brynlee McCurdy and Sophie Marvin. Sophie was named the top individual in the state. Congratulations to this amazing group. Thank you.
And again, my apologies. Now that brings us to item number 12. Did we have anybody that wanted to talk tonight?
We do have a full slate tonight. We have 10. So.
10?
Yes. So, and just a reminder, by our policy, it sounds like we're probably okay unless we get any more. But, um, our policy does mention, eh, after 30 minutes, we're supposed to extend by a vote of the board. So, um, I would say.
I would make a motion right now that we extend.
Okay.
I second.
And so, Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Snacks? Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Okay. So we will go until we're done. Would you like me to, uh, to read the public participation piece?
Uh, yeah, but I would make one, unless you're going to do it for the address.
Um, I, I can mention that if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So this is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please see reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. A slight adjustment that was made last, uh, meeting, I believe it was, is, uh, while we are still requiring or requesting the addresses to be on the, um, the sheets, uh, we, we will not be reading those, uh, for the public or posting them to our, our minutes. Anything else to, to add with that?
You're going to c, control the clock?
I will, I will watch.
Since they're going to be right there.
Well, it, it now has shortened since we are, uh, not doing 30 minutes. I can just keep it on one clock. So yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Keep an eye on him.
I will, I will give, uh, whoever is up a wave at, at about 30 seconds, just so you can begin wrapping up. Um, our first person is Lad Dilgard regarding Curriculum Review Committee.
Okay. So, uh, this is a, a good follow-up from the, um, really exciting curriculum stuff that we heard earlier. And I'm looking forward to those podcasts. I propose we review our curriculum to ensure it includes items of American pride and an accurate portrayal of history and that we're challenging, and two, we're challenging young minds to the fullest. Uh, some things might not get taught today because they're not cool or they don't follow divisive narratives that were pushed on every day. Americans have sacrificed to protect and liberate the rest of the world and young minds should learn to appreciate this. I'll give a quick example. The United States Navy polices the waterways of the entire world to ensure safe, free flow of commerce for everyone, not just us. No one else does this and we don't get paid. We don't demand ransoms or tolls. So, for example, if Argentina trades with Australia via the ocean, our navy ensures that free flow of goods. How many kids know this and how many kids are proud of it? Is it wrong to be proud of it? Millions want to move here because of opportunity, freedom, capitalism, rule of law. Capitalism's a dirty word. Socialism is hip to clueless people, um, who don't know the pain and poverty that it's created. Capitalism is what's provided those supercomputers in your pocket, the fancy car you're driving and full store shelves. But are we teaching capitalism? Are we teaching that it's a good thing? We're reminded constantly about the sins of the past, but not how great this country is and how good we have it. Secondly, on challenging our kids. My daughter, when she was entering seventh grade, the course guide said either seventh or eighth graders could take... or eighth graders could take Algebra I. She had a 99% average in sixth grade math, so a challenging class was in order. But the counselor said that's a typo. Only eighth graders can take Algebra I. So she was put in a class where she was literally learning the exact same stuff as the year before. After a couple of months, I reached out to the middle school principal and discovered that indeed, seventh graders were in Algebra I. We requested she be moved to that class. That was denied because the rule said transfers weren't allowed during the year. Now, no one thought that our daughter couldn't handle the transition. It was just the rule. That's a dumb rule. She sat through that class all year with a 99% grade average bored out of her mind. We as a district let her down. We didn't provide good counseling, didn't make an effort to put her in the most challenging class, and didn't correct our mistakes. Another example that is a little less stressful, but my son normally gets perfect scores on quizzes in history class. Regardless of the quiz results, they do the same thing in class. Maybe if you score perfect, you move on to the next section on your own. If you score perfect all the time, maybe you moves to another class. We should be searching for slack in the learning process so students aren't hearing already mastered material. I propose the board create a curriculum committee of interested citizens that reviews content, searches for slack, and proposes ways to eliminate it.
Next is Barb Shelby regarding Employee Relations Committee.
Good evening. My name is Barb Shelby. I'm a longtime resident of the Big Walnut School District and a former two-term school board member. At last week's meeting, the suggestion was made to form an employee relation committee that would consist of two representatives from each of the unions, those four unions, the superintendent and assistant superintendent, and two board members. While on the surface, this gives an appearance of open communication between employees and their employer of transparency, but in reality, it's an attempt to create an end run around the agreed-upon rules and procedures that have been developed with much hard work and collaboration and to provide professional and legal support for both the employees and our district. While I understand that some may not give credence to the Ohio School Boards Association as a resource, this expert organization states it clearly and well when they say that, in quotes, "Perhaps the most important responsibility of a school board is to employ a superintendent and treasurer and hold them responsible for managing the schools in accordance with the school board's policies," end quote. Our district has done just that. And it continues, in quotes, "Board members do not manage the day-to-day operations of a school district. They sue it that the system is managed well by those professionals," end quote. The track record of this district in student achievement, maintaining in-person education during a pandemic, the proactive reporting we heard last week about staffing plans, the fact that there are four agreed-upon bargaining unit contracts in a district this size, and a strong record of recruiting and retaining quality teachers, administrators, and staff speaks very highly of the reputation, the communication, and collaboration that represent the overall functioning of a highly performing school system with strong, knowledgeable, professional leadership. As an example of the system working, Article 6 of the negotiated agreement between the Big Walnut Professional Support Staff Association and the Board dated July of 2019 through June of 21 clearly describes that four-level grievance procedure that moves from informal through arbitration. It outlines the documentation required to protect all parties, the district personnel that are to be included at each level, and the support from union personnel that is available to employees throughout the process. Moving in different circles does not necessitate upending the policies, procedures, and agreements that are serving the employees and the administration well. When there is reference to losing talented, good teachers, principals, and staff, please include data to support those statements. When there are concerns about the structure of the system, realize that current policies and negotiated agreements need to hold sway until the work of changing that structure may occur. This should take place with the entire board included and significant legal advice along the way. This needs to be thoughtfully undertaken with the good of the entire district kept in mind. Thank you for your time.
Next is Tom Andrews, and I believe it's issues at the last meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The first thing I'd like to do is to present the board with this very expensive, finely crafted piece of art. $4.99 plus free shipping. Mr. Busker, do we need a motion and a second and discussion and a vote, or can you just accept?
I will accept. Well, depends on how much it, how much does he say it costs?
It's $4.99, $4.99.
It's probably day minimums.
Okay. At two and a half minutes, ding. Three minutes, two dings. We're done. Next, I wanted to say it was so nice to be able to watch the recording of the 2:10 morning meeting, to which I was unable to attend. The only thing I would suggest there is maybe to put it on YouTube or Rumble, since I believe the district has a YouTube page. nicer to see it on the TV screen instead of a computer or your phone. I had a few comments on what I saw. At the risk of being redundant, I would again suggest that Big Walnut look into the liability issue the district has in administering the COVID vaccination. I would suggest that the law firm for the district review the Board of Health documents for extended coverage to the district and give us an opinion. I would also ask the insurance carrier for the district to give us an opinion as to what our own coverage would provide in the event of an adverse reaction. This has nothing to do with being pro or anti-vax on this particular vaccination or all vaccinations, but everything to do with the financial safety and viability of the district in the event of a bad reaction. With 40 years of experience in risk management and insurance, I learned using assumption as a strategy never worked out very well. I thought that the idea for a committee to handle community questions or concerns was a good idea. An answer to what I just described above could be given in a board meeting in the Eagle Examiner or online at the district website. Many people who speak at the board meetings during public participation never get an answer or reply to their question or concern. I would think that after a while, people will just stop participating since there's never any follow-up. Last is what the school is doing as the teaching and/or promoting. Ding. There we go. CRT, SEL, or DEL. Now, you should give me an extra 30 seconds, because the first was to give you the gift, okay? It was reassuring to hear that the district is not using SEL, as many districts are around the country. Our definitions of it are different, non-political. Our version of SEL doesn't have anything to do with critical race theory. We are learning or leaning more towards... All right, here's the box, by the way. If you insist.
All right. Next is Ashley Ryder, and regarding Sentero. And would you like me to use the bell or not?
I would not. Thank you. I do have a rules question. Last week, Mr. Crowe said not to address any board member directly, but the rule says to address them to the presiding officer. Is that Mr., okay, perfect. Good evening. If you'll recall in last week's meeting, Mrs. Graziosi and Mrs. Nix addressed Facebook rumors about Sentero, counselors, and mental health services offered at our schools. They questioned community members for daring to suggest the board wanting to get rid of these services, even demanding an apology. They assured parents this was never part of their agenda or the board's. They told parents they stand by them and the mental health services provided by Big Walnut. Mrs. Graziosi ended her speech with the phrase, "Be your own fact checker." Well, here are the facts. During an August school board meeting, Mrs. Graziosi made these statements during public participation. "I would like to know who hired Sentero and at what cost, and why does the school district feel like it needs to be in the business of parenting our children? I'd like to know where the parents come in on this. You stated that mental health is a top priority of the safety committee. As a parent, I send my child to school to be educated on the basics, math, reading, English, science, and history. You state you plan to add several mental health professionals to align with national recommendations. Why are we aligning with national recommendations when you said we should consider this perspective of the students of our community? And I don't feel like this is the perspective of our community. I would like to see where parents have asked for this overreaching mental health involvement in our children's lives, because I know that's not what I've asked for. Here's some more facts. We sat and listened to endless comments from parents villainizing Sentero, including the statements I just read, fear mongering with phrases like, 'We have to elect a new board to get them out of our schools.' We saw candidates posting on social media about overreaching mental health services, inviting negative comments from their supporters. We read your websites during the campaign that said we need to focus on academics, not therapeutics, because therapeutics is emotional manipulation. We saw the presentations, we heard the speakers, the audacity to say, 'We're the ones who are causing panic in the community by suggesting this is part of your agenda.' Now that you've made a complete 180, my question for the board is this: Were you lying to your base to get elected, or are you lying now to the parents? Mr. Crowe, in every meeting, you've talked about the lack of stability...
Hold a minute.
...the keyboard warriors and said things like...
Hold a minute.
I'm not...
When I say stop, I'm the presiding.
Right, and I'm addressing you.
No, stop.
I'm addressing you.
And I'm telling you to stop for a second while I explain something to you.
Go ahead.
You cannot address or defame any member...
I did not.
You called us liars.
I'm reading the facts. I'm reading the facts. I have not addressed any member. I said Mrs. Graziosi and Mrs. Nix. I did not address them. I'm addressing you.
And you didn't ju...
I'm addressing you.
Zip it for a minute.
No. Listen, you, I honest, I realize you have a problem with authority or women in power trying to talk over you. But here's the thing, this is my time, not yours. I'm addressing you.
Your time's done.
No.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
I'm the presiding officer.
And I'm addressing you.
And I'm telling you, you're done at the podium. You can go sit down.
I'll speak at the next meeting then. Thank you.
That's fine. Now, before we move on, public participation is to explain to us your position, not to make accusations, not to call names. It is public participation. Voice your concern, and then we'll move on. Any personal attacks, name-calling, I will call out. Go ahead.
Next is Rachel Snyder. A welcome and something regarding transparency and trust.
Okay, my face was right the last time we did this. I printed off something. I'm Rachel Snyder. I live here. I am a parent. I am a social studies teacher of American history and government. I did my student teaching up at the high school. I also worked at the high school for a couple of years. Welcome to the new board members. I'm looking forward to hopefully having the same dispo... I can't even talk now either. I do better with high schools. Okay. I hope that there is the same diplomacy that was previously on other boards that I have seen over the years. We've moved back here in 2014. I have watched most of them, because I'm a single mom. I'm at home a lot, because my kids are getting older, so I can leave them. But I loved hearing that, it was said in the last meeting, that Big Walnut outperformed other Delaware County schools. We are also listed as a top school in the state. I think my concern is where it's been brought up, that things need to be completely overhauled. No school system is perfect. I work at a dropout recovery prevention school. If you want to talk about crazy, come to high school. We'll talk about that. So I guess there is some frustration on my part that there has been, it has been said that there's lack of transparency. I have, like I said, I have listened to most of the meetings. I appreciate, do I call you Mr. Busker? And Ms. Hamburg, and all the board members who have given input. I feel like there has been transparency. I need to follow. Also, there is not enough time. This is kind of going towards the transparency. I think I said the last time, all the learning standards for history and government, economics, where we teach capitalism, socialism, communism, all of that. We don't teach one is bad or good or whatever. A lot of times, especially with communism, it's the fact that things haven't worked the way that it wanted. We have ways to go about it and present the facts to the students. They figure out where they're going with it, and they can think for themselves. My job and the jobs of the teachers are not to just give one point of view and say, "There you go. Go out in the world, just have one point of view, and not accept anything else," because employers are not looking for that. They're looking for people who can change, who can adapt, who can figure out where they are and still stay true to themselves. CRT was not taught. I just finished up my master's in American history and government. It was not taught on any of it. It's a legal form. I keep hearing it shoved on a national scale, and as a social studies teacher, it is ridiculously frustrating. My students, oh, okay, is that my 30 seconds?
You've got 30 seconds.
Okay. All right. And again, trust, that was my last thing on there. Trust some of the teachers. Ask for their syllabus. Talk to the principals. Nobody that my children have had have hid anything from me. They have emailed, they have opened. When I email parents from the high school, there's a lot of times, parents didn't answer me back, didn't give me feedback. But just trust them. Ask for the curriculum, ask for the learning standards, see what they know. They are professionals. They learned this. I sat back there in the last meeting. Oh, and just let them teach, is what the teacher said. So anyways, thank you.
Next is Jamie Osborn, and this is regarding structure.
I want to start off by saying that I am sad to see where our district is heading. I have been in this school district for 36 years. I loved growing up in the Big Walnut school system. I was proud to stay where I went to school. I received a great education. The teachers prepared me for the future. I got to participate in a lot of school activities. I followed the school rules, guidelines, and I respected my teachers. When did the rules reverse? Today, teachers have no power or control over the students. There seems to be no more boundaries, structure, discipline, or morals being taught to these students. That is the most important part of the whole child, not just about feelings. For starters, kids can't, or kids can pretty much wear whatever they want, no matter how distracting it is. Students are wearing midriff, short shorts, skirts, dressing like animals. It is not cute, it is a distraction. When I was in school, I would have been sent home for a dress code violation. If a student talks out of line to a teacher, spoke vulgar or disrespectful to someone, they were held accountable for their actions. This would mean a phone call to the parents, a detention, Saturday school, or suspension. Today, they get a slap on the wrist and sent on their way. Bring back those types of corrective actions. Make the parents and students held accountable for their actions. Make it inconvenient for all, and maybe they will not think twice, or maybe they will think twice before they do it again. Doing nothing is setting children up for failure in the future. There are no consequences for bad decisions in the real world. It's not supposed to be easy for students or parents. If my child is not behaving, I will support whatever punishment he receives. Put the teachers back in control, not the students and parents. It's not about fear, but about respect. Let's get back to educating the students, set them up for success, not failure.
Next is Annette McMurray regarding attendance and other items.
All right. So the other day, I got to pull it up, I had to have my son take a picture of it and send it to me, I received a letter in the mail. The letter addressed the fact that my second grader has missed more than the allotted number of hours from school this year. So it shows that she has missed 69, yeah, I'll just say 69 hours out of 65 hours that are allotted. I was really sad to get this letter, because we work really hard to keep our children in school, but this year, huh?
Sorry, it's required by law.
No, I know it's required by law, and, but I think that, that some, you know, the, to get, okay, my husband's like, he's a school teacher, he's like, "Oh, my gosh, you know, we're going to get in trouble. We can't do this." I'm like, "What do you want me to do?" So I just, it really bothered me that I got the letter. I think, I understand that it's law, but this year, I wish that we could have been able to show a little bit more grace.
Can I address that, please?
Pardon?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'll stop the time, too.
We actually...
Yeah, I do not want you to ding the bell yet.
We actually tried to get some exceptions for that, because we agree, and we're not given them, so.
Okay. So that's good to hear, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward, because it was a concern that I had.
We have to notify you by law.
Okay. It's a concern that I had, and I know I've heard of some other parents in the district that also received it.
We share your frustration.
Can it be made up?
We worked really hard to get her to...
Can it be made up?
It's just the first tier of...
So I got a, I got a phone call, I think initially, like, kind of like an all-call, generic call.
Until you get a mediation, you're fine.
Okay.
Not that we're encouraging, but everybody knows, obviously, especially earlier in the year when we had more quarantines.
Yeah, and that's what impacted a lot of those hours.
If I had to roll over that, I would, but that's just...
Yeah, and we try, we try to follow the 24 hours.
Sorry, I just needed to answer that.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate, Angie.
All right, you're back on the clock.
Okay, I'm back on the clock. Okay, so the other thing that I wanted to take a moment to address was something that[1790.24] that my sister addressed. When we were in school, respect was demanded. It was something that we all showed to our teachers. I feel like that that's changed dramatically. The expectations of our children are not the same as they used to be, and I think that we need to go back to some of those ways. I've heard parents say they've had to beg some of the principals to give their child a detention, because there was a behavior that they felt like additional discipline needed to take place, and they actually had to beg for it. I just think we need to go back to letting our teachers control their classrooms and not worrying about upsetting the parents and upsetting the students. Teachers have a job to do, and in order to do that successfully, control needs to be in place. And I think that that's gotten out of control when it comes to our dress code. I know it's not just our school district dealing with it. My husband is a teacher at Mount Vernon, and the dress codes he sends down to the office as they're coming off the bus is not appreciated by the parents, it's not appreciated by the students, but it's the rules, and we need to follow them. So that's one thing we talk about, our teachers, and we talk about respecting our teachers, and we talk about, you know, allowing our teachers to teach. If we don't follow the rules, it takes away from the time in the classroom when they can teach. So that was my other item. Thank you.
Next is Lindsey Leslie, regarding mental health.
Good evening, board members, school administration, and Big Walnut public. I'm here to read a letter from a mother of children in our district, who would speak to you herself, but needs to keep her child's story anonymous, to whomever cares to listen. With all this back and forth on Centero, and what you said and what you say you didn't say, I felt the need to share our story. I am glad you have never needed these services, but we are that family. We have asked the school to, quote, "overreach." We will ask over and over again, if needed, because simply, it saved my child's life. I'm a parent of five children. My oldest is at BWI, and to say they have had a rough year would be an understatement. The bullying started in second grade in a different district that did little to nothing to help. Things got so bad, we left. With a lot of research, we moved here to Big Walnut for a fresh start. Well, this year, the bullying came back, and it was so bad, my child became depressed, withdrawn, so many meltdowns, crying, wishing they were dead. At 12 years old, my child has an actual suicide plan. This isn't just a sad kid. This is a kid who has been pushed to the brink. They made some very scary artwork, in which was what pushed me as a parent to have the school step up their efforts. Enter Centero. I didn't even know this was an option. The school never involved them until I said it was okay after I was explained what they were. Mrs. Fortune is amazing, but I only can do so much as one person, and my child needed help immediately. We were already on the waiting list everywhere for months, and we finally just got outside therapy this month. My child would never have made it this long without Centero counselors. I'm not exaggerating one bit when I say that this program saved my kid's life. We have been down a very dark road this year, places you never want to be with your child, and we are not, received this, had we not received this extra help from the schools, we would not be here talking about my amazing kid in the same capacity. I have no doubt in my mind, they would not be here. We are still on a daily struggle, but we are getting there. I cannot thank the school enough for offering a program like this. Everyone should be thankful that we have a school district willing to step up and help a child in need. Not every child or family can get outside, outside help outside of school. If you personally don't want the help, then decline it, but don't take it away from those children in desperate need. The outcomes of these lives, of these children, will be on your hands. Thank you for listening. And I know this, this child, they are an amazing child, and thank you for helping them.
Next is Larry Wells, regarding diverse books for the school library.
Good evening. I brought this discussion or topic to discuss, mainly because the obvious. I'm the elephant in the room. In any time that you have to vote or suggest that you need some sort of investment in diverse books, that's stating where the deficiency is at. I work in e-learning. I create content. I work for major corporations all across the state, and I specialize in diversity and inclusion in that content. You have to be intentional when you are trying to make sure that you're displaying representation from everybody, that may either be in this room or not be in this room. You have to make the assumption that there are folks that are different races, religions, all types of accessibility issues, and you really have to kind of consider that intentionally, even if it's not obvious to you, even if it's not something that you personally can associate with. I can tell you, as a person who doesn't have the opportunity to take this skin off, there are a lot of things that are associated with that, that people try to make assumptions about me, about my background, about what I might do if I move a certain way, or if I get pulled over by law enforcement, that sort of thing. And it's just unfortunate. And where do those seeds get planted? From the unintentional educational resources that are deprived from a lot of school districts, including this one, where you really need to plant those seeds of tolerance, acceptance. I heard some stories about, I don't agree with a lot of stuff, a lot of people, a lot of different religions, backgrounds, political things, whatever it is, but I accept those individuals for having that perspective, and I freely accept them to voice their opinion, be respectful, you know, do whatever it is that they do. I don't, I might not agree with what they wear, what they eat, what they believe in, but it's, we live in America, and we're a community, and we have to get back to being a community, not separating folks together, not trying to assume things, not slandering people. We really need to take the time to invest in understanding what other people might go through, even if you just don't understand it. And so, I'm sure a lot of people wouldn't even understand what I might need to do to put, to keep my hair, there's not a lot of barbers in this neighborhood, so here we are. That's not why my hair's like this, but to that point, understand that I know what most folks in this room do to upkeep their hair. That's because I was taught that. And so, I'm just asking you, not asking you to change your heart, I'm asking you to change your mind and understand that, yes, please, invest in diverse resources for young folks. Thank you.
Next is Allison Fagan. Next is Allison Fagan. And it's regarding mental health services.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here. As many of you know, I had the honor of serving on this Board of Education for a little over eight years, I think nine and change, and served as president of the board for some period of time. I know what these seats feel like. To respect that is important to me. That said, I spoke to this board in October at a morning meeting, presented as a part of the importance of mental health services to our students. Another hat I wear is I'm a licensed psychologist. I graduated from Ohio State in 1998, so I've been a psychologist, pardon me, '96, licensed since 1998, so I kind of know what I'm talking about when we talk about mental health services. I want to thank the administration, our principals, our teachers for educating the whole child, and I want to thank the board and our administrators for retaining mental health services that are provided by a well-regarded community agency, Centero. You walk in my shoes and talk to other psychologists and mental health providers in central Ohio, Centero is like none other. We are also very fortunate in that these services are provided to our school district with funds from the Delaware Moral Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. So the services are provided at no cost to Big Walnut schools. That's pretty amazing. This is especially important right now, as we come, hopefully, at what's the backside of this pandemic. Mental health issues are not going to go away, especially among children. We've seen two, there's likely to be a two-year developmental delay in their social, emotional development because of what they have been through in these couple of years. It's one thing for us as adults to tolerate this, it's another thing for a six-year-old, a four-year-old, an eight-year-old to tolerate it. A recent article was posted on WBNS 10 TV, was put on television and then posted on their website. Kevin Landers is a journalist with WBNS, and he wrote a piece that was entitled, "Ohio's Child Behavioral Health System Is At A Breaking Point." I quote, "The number of children seeking services is overwhelming the system, because there are not enough therapists to treat them." That's not going to change anytime soon. Mental health services support the student who needs them, as well as our educators, who have a referral source in the classroom. Thank you.
Our final one for the night is Steve Massey, regarding board ethics.
Superintendent Hamburg, Treasurer Buskirk, members of the board, thank you. As per protocol, I'll attempt to direct my comments to the resigning officer without directing comments to individual board members. As a previous superintendent, I'm very concerned about a presentation that was made by a community member last Thursday morning's board meeting. This, along with many other examples, is confirming not only my suspicion, but the suspicion of many others, that for a lack of a better phrase, there seems to be a lot of pillow talk going on, not only between some selected community members directly to selected board members, but also between board members leading to a board meeting, where topics have already been discussed and decisions have already been made behind the scenes prior to the public meeting. This presentation made by the community member stated during public participation the following: "Thank you, good morning. I wanted to, first of all, I got here a little late. I wanted to find out, for the moment of silence, did that go through? Is that happening? Upon hearing this, there was an uncomfortable yes from the board president. The community member stated, 'Okay, I wanted to thank you for that.'" Why is this person thanking them? How did she know this was even going to be on it? The community member went on with a prepared speech with directives of implementing the moment of silence, which is important to remember, the speech was prepared ahead of time before she came to the meeting. The community member went on to say, "As we implement this, it should be after the pledge of allegiance," and gave more advice on reading of such by the building principal with further advice. I won't go on, you get the point. This begs the question, how did this person know to ask that and have a prepared speech with her further suggestions around the topic? It certainly made me wonder. As you can imagine, as a previous superintendent, I've had some experience with preparing board agendas and worked with many board presidents in the past to prepare such. The Board Governance Team Protocol specifically states, "If a board member wishes to have an item added to the agenda, he or should make a request to the board president, who will then consult with the superintendent." For full disclosure, I actually couldn't care less whether you have a moment of silence or not. I do believe it's being done just to check a box versus it being sincere. If it's the intent of the board to implement this in the schools, I ask you if this has been discussed with the BWEA and their thoughts on it. It's only going to add to an already-packed morning agenda, not to mention instructional time. It's not going to mean much to an elementary student, and as far as middle school and high school students, as somebody who's a middle school, not only teacher but principal for 15 years, believe me, most will just tune it out. I'm going to go out on a limb here and guess that this addition to the board agenda was at the request of the board president versus the superintendent. Otherwise, I think she would have had it on the last seven years that she's been here. However, this also means it's abundantly clear that this community member was given a heads-up. Remember, she came to the meeting with a prepared speech. Now, I actually laid no blame on this community member or the unprecedented access to board members. I laid the blame squarely on the board member or members who are allowing such access, for allowing being told what to do and for this to happen. I urge this board, not all of you, to be very careful. You're on a slippery slope here. Board protocols and ORC are in place for a reason, and I suggest they be followed versus what constituents are telling you to do. Finally, I have an offer.
Time.
Thank you. There was mention of losing good employees, because we have no avenues to express their thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
Mr. Massey, he told you 30 seconds ago, your time was up.
Oh, I didn't even look up. I would love the opportunity to be with one or two of you or all of you in executive session. Remember, anyone in this room who has ever been in leadership rows knows that we lose good employees at times. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
I think you understand protocol.
Oh, I do.
Yeah. That's the last one?
That's it.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, thanks goodness. I came that close to gabbling you out for making accusations against me.
I don't think it's an accusation.
Yes, you did.
It's a fact.
I'm the one that put the silence, moment of silence on the agenda.
I know.
Yeah.
That's how the member knew.
No, that's not how the member knew.
If you want to get into a debate here, public...
No. I'm not going to get in, I'm not going to.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I think both...
More than willing.
Gentlemen, both of you, I think, just to go back to the public participation, that it's not a back and forth.
No, it's not a back and forth, but I will not put up with accusations unethical on me. I put up with it last week. I will not put up with it. If you have a problem, if you think there's something to it, then file a case with the Ohio Ethics Commission. If you think you have evidence, there is no evidence. Moving on. Item number 13, business items. Jeremy?
So the first one here, I think we need a motion.
Pardon?
13, one, right.
Okay. Well, your name was on there, I thought you were going to read it.
Oh, I, I can, if you'd like.
I thought that's why your name was on there.
Usually, he's the one that will discuss it if you ask for a motion.
Okay. It is recommended the board approve the FY 2022 alternative tax budget information to be submitted to the county auditor.
Okay, so the, this is a, you may recall, if you've been at other meetings, for Mrs. Nix, being part of other public bodies, this is probably a requirement as well, but each year, we're required to file with the county auditor an alternative tax budget. It's based on, we base it in our process on our five-year forecast. You'll have noted, if you looked at it, that it provides a couple of years' worth of history, and it, this is looking at more of a calendar year view that the county uses for setting and planning for next year's millage rates and things like that. So I'm open to questions if you have others. Mainly, it is part of a statutory requirement, is why we provide these. Okay. And with that, no discussion, I can do roll call. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Item 13.2. It is recommended the board approve the 2021 tax rates for taxes collected in 2022 and estimated revenue.
All right. This is provided to us by the county, where they have looked at our total assessed valuation and then set the rates, and then we are required to affirm those rates. As I've actually shared earlier, the taxes are being collected, tax bills have gone out. I will note, though, if you looked at this, that the rate is actually higher on what we're approving. They have you approve the rate at what the full voted rate is for several of these, and our effective rate is actually lower than this. It is for a resident, a resident, it's 33.575 and some additional change. So I didn't want that to be a confusion. They do have us approve it at the full rate, though, and not the, what the effective with the, what happens at the county level of rollback of those amounts. So, other, other questions on that? Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Takes us to item number 13.3, it is recommended the board approve the following extended field trip. Actually, trips, girls' track and field team, Russ Parsons Invitational in West Virginia on April the 15th and 16th of 2022, and the eighth grade class, Washington DC field trip, April 25 through 28 of 2022.
Submit.
A second.
And that's got your name on it, Angie?
Yes. Thank you to Coach Eibner with our girls' track team. I know that's an opportunity they've had in the past, so excited to get back to that. And I think our eighth graders are also excited to be able to get back to the DC trip. Just to note, it is a little earlier than it normally is, and we're approving it a little later because of just kind of waiting and, and watching. The reason we moved it up was that gave us more flexibility. We typically go the last week of May, which is a little nicer weather-wise, and also, it's a nice way to end the year. However, with moving it up, it gave us some flexibility if we have any issues come up with the crazy world that we live in, so. Any questions?
Okay. Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
13.4, it is recommended the board approve the following donations. 18-disc golf baskets and installation donated by the Columbus Flyers Disc Golf Club, donated to the current Big Walnut Middle School campus. Donation value $3,763.85. A $1,200 donation by Erin and Sheri Dorsh. A $20 donation from Stephanie Salzer. $25 donation from Tiffany Watt, donated to Big Walnut Local School District to augment our current selection of diverse books. Going to District Support Fund 018-9,000. A $1,000 donated to Souders, supporting students with funds, donated by Serenity Fairway Foundation. Going into the Souders Principal Fund 018-9,004. Do I have a motion?
I know.
Any questions?
I, I just am curious if the money that was donated by Sheri and her husband, Stephanie and Tiffany can be used to pay for the Read Across America program we've got going?
It's already paid for.
Is it? Okay.
And Sheri, I don't know if you want to address kind of what happened with the elementaries last year with the books, or kind of how we use those, but.
Yeah. So last year, same kind of timeframe, the Read Across America. I think it was Mrs. Bailey sent out an email about, you probably remember about us reading in the schools, and I couldn't because of my work schedule. So I decided to record myself reading a book, and, and at that time, I thought, what a great way to, you know, try to get more books out there for our kids and, and, you know, books that better represented some of our students. So decided to donate seven books at the time, various titles at the elementary school level, and then some, some dollars, I think it was $500 last year, because I figured that the teachers probably had better buying power than I did and could get, get more bang for their buck. So they were able to buy a couple of additional titles, and then they basically bought a set of those for each elementary school. So there was a variety of different books. I, I don't even, I don't know if I remember any of the.
The Elephant One, I remember.
Yeah, the Strictly No Elephants was the one that I read. There was one that was called I Am Enough. Our Class Is A Family, Red, A Crayon Story. This Is How We Do It, One Day In The Lives Of Seven Kids From Around The World. Another one.
So these were mostly for elementary?
Yeah, this was all for the elementary school last year. So the teachers really appreciated it. It gave them the opportunity to kind of go through some really meaningful lessons with the kids, and it put a lot of books into our schools that had, you know, kids with different abilities, brown kids, black kids, like, so, so gave the opportunity for some kids to maybe see themselves on, on some book covers that hadn't before. So this is just another opportunity to expand that and leaving it up to Annie and Kate or, you know, the.
I think Kate is taking that on again, working with our elementary principals, and she did a really nice job last year with helping create some resources for the teachers to use with those. Just want to say thank you to you and the other donors, because we're always excited when we can get more books, and especially, as you said, so kids that maybe aren't used to seeing themselves on a cover have a way to identify and develop that self-worth. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And that brings us to item 14, human resources. Mark?
Good evening, thank you. Just wanted to run through the items that we have this evening for you, and certainly take any questions that you may have. Under 14.1, recommending a leave of absence there, that is within the contractual agreements within that union. 14.2, supplemental contracts, and this is always a time of year when I can thank all of our coaches for all of their work and all the extra hours that they put into, you know, the work that they do with our kids and our student athletes, and so huge thanks to them, well beyond the hours of what these supplementals can really support, but we appreciate all their work. And also just want to, you know, give a special thank you to each of our volunteers that work with our teams and to help our students. So our volunteers are huge to, to each of these sports teams, so thank you for that. Under 14.3, asking you that you approve the revision of a leave of absence for a staff member to be able to return. Malia actually had planned on taking the year off, but we do have a mid-year fill needed due to retirement, and she has actually stepped up to the plate to be able to do this, and really appreciate this, as she is a highly qualified teacher to be able to step into that middle school math program. So excited to have her return back for this school year. Under 14.4, asking for your approval of these limited contracts. These are teachers who have been in their position for 60 days in the same assignment, so it is required that we then approve the rate change for them in moving to a long-term assignment, essentially. Then under 14.5, these are not adds, these are just moves and, and within the positions within our food services department. And under 14.6, I do want to especially highlight here Penny Sturdivant, as she is, has turned in her retirement to us. She has been amazing for this district. We knew this was, kind of, the time was coming, as Mr. Sturdivant retired just a few years ago, but so excited for them to be able to enjoy the retirement ahead for, for their lives, and at the same time, will greatly miss Penny and what she has contributed to our kids, to our administrative team, to our entire staff. So thank you so much to Penny and all the work that she has put in at this district. Any questions?
I want to.
I don't.
Well, Steve, Mr. Fuji can be here tonight, but I, he had a few comments that he wanted to make about Mrs. Sturdivant, and I too wanted to thank Mrs. Sturdivant for all that she's done to all the different programs and everything that have been put into place in the high school to really help our kids just excel and be successful and move forward in their lives, and, and I know she's done extraordinary things, and, and my kids have benefited from a lot of the work that she's done. Mr. Fuji asked for one of us to read this. He says, "As one board member, I personally want to thank Mrs. Penny Sturdivant for her years of service. This board always expresses gratitude when a member of the professional staff retires. However, Mrs. Sturdivant holds a special place in my heart and the heart of my family. After 28 years of service to Big Walnut and 35 years in total in education, Penny has influenced the lives of countless alumni and current students. She has impacted students' lives for the positive from an educational perspective. But more than that, Penny has influenced the lives of students and families beyond the classroom. A multiple handicapped, nonverbal child comes to mind. Penny, in an effort to be a good educator, counselor, and mentor, assisted the family by providing links to services inside and outside the school walls. In fact, Penny herself marshaled a team of educators to go to the home and clean and otherwise help in ways that go above and beyond. Penny has helped students be successful on the ACT, SAT, and application process to their dream institutions. Penny has worked with colleges to establish the Big Walnut's Clearinghouse Expectations with the NCAA. Penny has even been the literal lifeline for students and families in situations where children lost a loved one or families lost a student. Her patience and demeanor and the trust she garnered during a situation in 2009 literally helped my heart heal, and in fact, the heart of the entire school when we had a student tragically pass. She has been a remarkable professional for this district, and I want to express my most sincere gratitude for Penny's 28 years in this district. Even as Penny contemplates retirement, she continues to influence my son with recommendations about his educational future, and I hope that she knows that retiring from this district does not mean she can retire from the life of the four Fujis. Thank you, Mrs. Penny Sturdivant."
Thank you. Item number 14.1.
Mr. President, I move for consent agenda, items 14.1 through 14.6 inclusive.
Make that 14.5, and I'll agree. I think we need to do hers separate.
Okay. Items 14.1 through 14.5 inclusive.
I'll second that.
All right. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And that leaves us with 14.6. It is recommended the board approve the retirement of Penny Sturdivant, District Testing College and Career Readiness Coordinator, effective at the end of business May 31 of 2022.
Submit.
What I said, hold, I say 2002? Sorry about that.
She might have liked that back then, but you know.
All right. Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Takes us to item 15, scheduling of the next board meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be March the 17th, 2022, at 6:30 PM here at the District Administrative Office. Streaming will be made available on the district website. Item 16, executive session. It is recommended the board enter executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms, conditions of their employment.
Commit.
Second.
Just a second. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
We will take a 10-minute recess prior to going into executive.